All right, I call the meeting to order today, Monday, August seventh, twenty twenty-three. Roll call, we have selectmen Howdy Goodwin, Eric Eaton, Kenzie Jewett, Kevin Buck, and myself, Jamie Thurlo, and town manager Jesse Dunbar. Adoption of the agenda, is anything anybody would like to change? All right, first thing we have is a public hearing for a liquor license and special amusement permit for Oktoberfest. Let's open the public hearing at five oh three.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Bobby Lewis, director of Southwest Harbor Tremont Chamber of Commerce. This is Cynthia, our office manager, and we're here to do a standard agreement again for this year for the Oktoberfest, October seventh, sixth?
Six and seven.
Six and seven.
Mm-hmm.
We're doing the wine tasting on the sixth, Oktoberfest on the seventh, and we'd love to do it again. It was pretty successful last year and...
Yep.
A lot of fun.
Yeah, there were no issues at all, I heard from last year whatsoever, so...
No, I don't think, I don't, you never heard anything from the police presence there or...
No. It's good.
We've never seen any complaints.
Yeah.
And I guess we plan to do the parking the same way. I polled a lot of people last year during the event, and there didn't seem to be any issues with parking whatsoever. They liked the parking, they parked here or they parked down at the school.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's great.
Yeah, sounds good.
We do have three bands this year, same timeframe. We have Dallas Punchkins, Tim Lewis, and Band from Eden. And so they're, they're scheduled to report at what time?
Um, the last was about an hour, but yeah, from twelve to five. All the music's done by five o'clock.
Well, that's too bad. Five o'clock.
It's time to go home at five.
Yeah, I know, but, but, Kenzie, you know what I mean.
No!
That doesn't count.
Oh, nice coming.
Mm-hmm.
Last year we had nineteen, but we plan on having some more come on board.
Mm-hmm.
And then we've got about seven vendors, we're hoping, and for food.
Yep.
And we also did have some crafters, thank you, not made of words. So maybe four, five, or six crafters, and I think the Tremont one, Seventy-fifth Committee, which I'll, you know, from like that maybe as well. We're gonna plan on having a table and maybe sell some merchandise and...
Yep, nice. All right, that's great. Thank you guys for all your hard work and the time you've put into it. It's nice to see stuff like that happen down there. I know the Hundred and Seventy-Fifth thing worked out pretty well, too.
Yeah.
Good. All right, any more comments? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at five oh six.
I make a motion to approve the application of the Southwest Harbor Tremont Chamber of Commerce for Acadia's Oktoberfest.
Second.
Located at ninety Tremont Road for a state special tasting event, liquor license, and special amusement permit.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the application of Southwest Harbor Tremont Chamber of Commerce for Acadia's Oktoberfest located at ninety Tremont Road for a special, state special tasting event liquor license and a special amusement permit. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have minutes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The minutes from Monday, July seventeenth.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, July seventeenth, twenty-three.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from Monday, July seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm gonna abstain, I didn't make the meeting.
Okay, Kevin up. All right, next we have approval of warrants. From fiscal year twenty-three, we have warrant one thirty-four for thirteen thousand, three hundred, thirty-three dollars and eighty-five cents, one thirty-five for two thousand, one hundred, seventy-five dollars and five cents. Uh, from fiscal year twenty-four, we have warrant five for nine thousand, three hundred, ninety-one dollars and three cents, warrant six for twelve thousand, eight hundred, forty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents, seven for twelve thousand, seven hundred, ninety-two dollars and eleven cents, eight for four thousand, one hundred, ninety-three dollars and thirty-nine cents, nine for thirteen thousand, four hundred, twenty-five dollars and thirty-two cents, and ten for three hundred, thirteen thousand, one hundred, ninety-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. Yep.
I can get a copy. I move to approve warrants one thirty-four and one thirty-five from fiscal year twenty-three, and warrants five through ten on fiscal year twenty-four.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants one thirty-four and one thirty-five from fiscal year twenty-three, and warrants five through ten from fiscal year twenty-four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have, uh, regular business. We have the comprehensive plan update. Jesse, do you have that for us?
Yeah, okay, yeah. So I emailed you all the draft version.
Yes.
The comp plan task force voted in favor of their drawing meeting of submitting it to the state for the state's review to make sure it complies with the standards the state has. Part of the submittal is for the chair of the select board to sign the submittal form. Our consultants, North Star, said either select boards make a motion to have the chair sign it or sometimes just have the chair sign it as an administrative part of the task. But I just put it on the agenda since you're having a meeting, so have you authorized the chair to sign it? We're in agreement with sending it on to the state. We can still make changes to the comp plan going forward, and there'll still be the required public hearings. This is just for the state to review, make sure all this piece that requires is in there.
I had some concerns with the math and where it was shown, you know, what was, what was being changed, but this probably isn't the time for that, just wait until it gets...
Yes.
Put into the state and then, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Larry and Kevin, last meeting, I wasn't there, but, um, it all looked pretty good last time I looked it over.
Yeah, yeah. It was a pretty brief meeting, we just kind of reviewed it and agreed to send it to the state.
Yeah, I think we worked out most of the bugs that...
Yeah, Sarah had a lot of mistakes. Just little, you know, mistakes, I don't know if you saw that.
I also corrected one of my corrections.
Okay.
That's good.
I think I said duck code is... It isn't working very well.
Yeah. But there's, there might be some more in there, there'd be mess, but I don't think it's anything big.
Yeah, I think now we'll have the opportunity for a few other eyes on it, so that'll help.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the comprehensive plan submittal form and submit the draft to the state for review.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the chair to sign the comprehensive plan submittal form and to submit the draft to the state for review. Is there any discussion?
If the state finds that they, if something isn't up to what they want, then ask speed up again.
Yeah, is that how it, it just comes back probably for corrections, I would think, and then...
Yeah, and then it's got to go through again, it'll delay it, but...
Yeah.
That's the way it is.
Yeah, it's not the end of the world, though, if they, you know, I'm sure. Like you said, you get more eyes on it the more times you read it than they...
And I guess we're a shoot for the, uh, May twenty, uh, twenty twenty-four.
Yep, good. Sounds good. Any more discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have the FY twenty-four war fees. It's our fee schedule, I know the war fees haven't changed, have they, Jesse?
No, there's no proposed...
So just the harbor was the only...
The Maury, sorry.
Yep.
Yeah, so there's no change over year to year for the war fees.
Looks good to me.
Yep.
Make a motion to adopt the September first, twenty twenty-three through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four war fees as proposed.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the September first, twenty twenty-three through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four war fees as proposed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have fire department workers' compensation. Uh, we had discussed, uh, with the, with you guys last time about getting us, uh, what we needed by this meeting for what, what Jesse needed, and I see everything is, is you guys have adopted your, um... Whatever you wanna call it, regulations.
Policies.
Policies. So, thank you, and...
There's the memo there from the fire department using your packet, um, and then since then, also this morning, Jim sent over copies of the policies themselves.
Yep.
So I can forward those on to MMA, uh, speaking of MMA Friday, they seem satisfied with everything. Send me a form.
Awesome.
Hey, thanks, guys, uh, if anyone...
I know it can be a pain, but thank you. I'm glad we got it cleared up easily. All right, you don't need a motion or anything on that, do you?
No.
Okay. Next we have speed radar signs. I'll let you take that one, Jesse.
Okay, so, um, as you know, we have the mobile, mobile speed sign.
The one that's chained to a tree and has a five gallon bucket full of cement that you carry around, yeah?
That's mobile.
There is a new trailer in public works garage that's being mounted on, hopefully this week, so it can be mobile. But it spends most of the season at its location on Harbor Drive, just 'cause it's such an area that needs the speed radar sign there, that we haven't been moving it too much. There are some other locations, um, that it's been for and that people would like it to go. So I thought, um, I read an article about Bar Harbor using some of their ARPA funds to install the permanent ones, like you see in Sullivanville and Town Hill. I think Bar Harbor just did like six more or something. So I did look into what those cost, um, they use the same company that we got our message board from, and the current radar sign, um, which is also the same company that Bar Harbor used. So the quote, um, for that sign in your packet, um, it's just over thirty-four hundred dollars for one of them. You have just over forty-five thousand remaining in your ARPA funds, um, reserve if you wanted to purchase one or more of them. We've received, um, some calls last week regarding, um, Bernard Road and new people flying too fast, particularly in the area just past Lopez Point as you're getting towards war in that section. Which we can either put the mobile one over or do a permanent one there. I would be in favor of a permanent one on Harbor Drive, sure, if you want to do something like that, but...
It works, I was behind someone flying the other day, and they, soon as they saw that, they slowed right down, so I mean, that's, people do fly on Harbor Drive.
When we were talking about it before, cops said you'll be able to sit there and just watch the taillights. As soon as they see that thing flashing at them, and it does, they work, and I don't know how many people have said they watch. I'm a fan of those, right where in between Ronald Johnson's house there and Mitchell's have it now. That's a perfect spot, I don't think it would bother anybody there either.
Yeah. And just for informational, um, the school zone signs that we have, um, once those get up, we do display your speed, um, so they'll be on either end of the school zone. We're currently trying to arrange for the drilling of the holes, for the poles, that's kind of led you there. We've asked DOT if they would assist with a auger truck, and they said that they would, but there are trust me problems for a month, and still, so, anyway. So they'll be two men, so that's...
It'd be nice to have them in before school started, definitely.
Yeah.
Mike Museetti has one, too, just so you know.
Yeah, I'm waiting for a call back.
Yeah.
But everybody's waiting for a call back from my...
Yeah. Is there any other spot that anyone else thinks that there should be? I know the portable, like you said, down in Bernard, but can you think of any other? I know just 'cause I live in the Bass岸边 side, but is there any other spots up the other way that you can think of?
The entire backside?
Yeah, I know.
No, I think, yeah, if we were to get one permanent down here and then just bounce that portable one around, maybe.
I'd say we get complaints about lighthouse, but I don't think we need the permanent one there.
No.
Probably the second most used spot for the mobile one is coming down, um, Harbor Drive towards the fire station.
From the other direction, yeah.
Yeah.
'Cause it's twenty-five there, and it's hard to imagine that it is just...
Yeah, to see, um, I don't know, around Harper's Redemption there, that corner.
Yep.
And before that, there's a ton of kids during, you know, bus time. And I catch myself sometimes like, oh, you know, a bunch of kids around there, and that's a high-speed area as well, those two straight stretches there. But just keep that in mind, I don't, I think maybe one new permanent one might be good, but I don't, I don't know if we need two. I don't know what you guys think.
I know, just try one and see how it works.
See what happens.
I know a lot of the, a lot of it's the ferry traffic, too. You see all the traffic going down, you, you go right there, when they're, you know, they get cooking right along.
You can definitely tell the ferry schedule.
Excuse me, what at the north end of Centon Road?
Yes, I would.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
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 Yeah, and I'm actually surprised at the price for thirty-four hundred dollars, you can't get much nowadays.
Can you move a boat or...
No, I don't.
Uh, I make a motion to authorize the purchase of one speed radar sign at a cost of thirty-four hundred, forty dollars, fifty cents using the ARPA funds reserve account and to install the sign at the current Harbor Drive location.
Second. Been moved and seconded to authorize the purchase of one speed radar sign at a cost of three thousand, four hundred, forty dollars and fifty cents using the ARPA funds reserve account and to install the sign, um, at the current portable Harbor Drive site location. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have FY twenty-three encumbrance.
Um, so this is, the public works foreman, um, has inquired about purchasing a fuel tank for the back of truck six to service the equipment when they're up on the job site, particularly up Seal Pole Way and Cape Road, to avoid having to come fill five gallon, um, containers for bringing the chain back. He's selected one that's a toolbox-tank combo, um, it's about twenty-eight hundred dollars, includes the fuel pump, hose, et cetera. There are approximately seven thousand, two hundred and forty dollars left over in the summer gas diesel budget from FY twenty-three. That amount is high due to the budgeting process, um, for FY twenty-three when gas prices were skyrocketing and went high on all our fuel line accounts, just in case. Um, so I'm proposing, if you're in agreement, um, with such a purchase, that you give the number, that amount into this budget.
And I realize they've been filling equipment with five gallon cans.
Yeah. I know, as I just said, that's, uh, everything's going up, but twenty-eight hundred bucks, Howdy?
That's a little high.
Yeah.
You can, you can find something cheaper than that, I'm sure.
As attractive as possible.
Was it really? Wow, I know, stuff's going, I won't say, everything's going through the roof, so it could be.
That's with the toolbox, too, that's not just the fuel tank.
Yeah, probably time you buy the pump now, probably the pumps that go on.
Five hundred dollars.
Yeah, yep. No, I, that's, they obviously need one, I can't believe they haven't had one.
Yeah, it's a long running line.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, exactly, probably pay for itself pretty quickly in labor.
Takes over the filling machine with five gallon cans, too.
Yeah.
What much did you get in it?
What trucks are going on, the new, new flatbed? So there's no toolbox on there whatsoever now, right? So it wouldn't be terrible to have the combo?
Mm-hmm.
'Cause I was thinking, you know, maybe we could just tell them to go get a cheaper one, 'cause fifteen hundred bucks, you can get one, right? With the toolbox combo, that'd probably be pretty handy.
Right.
I move to authorize the encumbrance of twenty-eight hundred dollars from fiscal year twenty-three summer gas diesel account to the fiscal year twenty-four summer gas diesel account for the purchase of a fuel tank.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the encumbrance of twenty-eight hundred dollars from the FY twenty-three summer gas diesel account to the FY twenty-four summer gas diesel account for the purchase of a fuel tank. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have ARPA reserve transfer.
So this was, um, last year when we were doing, um, going over hiring of third public works employee as well as making some adjustments, um, to the wages of public works. You had set aside using ARPA funds for those increases to the budget. So we had tentatively set aside approximately, um, twenty-five thousand of the reserve for that. Now that the fiscal year's ended, we can see what each of those came in over budget at, and it's closer to around eleven thousand dollars, um, which is the reason you have more funds available in reserve. Um, so I request a motion to transfer, um, those designated amounts from the reserve into the FY twenty-three budget.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah.
I motion to authorize a transfer from the ARPA fund reserve account to the following accounts. Three thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars, fifty cents to the FY twenty-three public works foreman wages line, two thousand, seven hundred, ten dollars and seven cents to the FY twenty-three public works drivers line, and four thousand, fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents to the FY twenty-three public works laborers line.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the transfers from the ARPA reserve account to the following accounts. Three thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars, fifty cents to the FY twenty-three public works foreman wages line, two thousand, seven hundred, ten dollars and seven cents to the FY twenty-three public works driver line, four thousand, fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents to the FY twenty-three public works laborers line. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Thanks for letting me read that, Kenzie.
You're welcome.
I was waiting for you.
You can get this last one.
Yeah.
I think they're one at the ending, yeah.
Right, that's right, yeah, saving that up for you, Eric.
Appreciate it. Next we have the election of MMA vice president and executive committee.
This is your annual request from MMA for your vote on their vice president and executive committee members. You have to vote for one vice president, there's one option, you have three executive committee members, there are three options.
Sounds like a good fit.
That's pretty self-explanatory.
I make a motion to vote for Melissa Doan for MMA vice president, and Shiloh Lefernier, I guess, Nathaniel Rudy and Deana Walker for the MMA executive committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to vote for Melissa Doan for MMA vice president, and Shiloh Lefernier, uh, Nathaniel Rudy, and Deana Walker for MMA executive committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Right, town managers are for it.
All right, over the last few weeks, I had a meeting with Sundog Solar about our solar array. I prepared the Harvard committee financials and packet prep for the Harvard committee. I attended the Harvard committee meeting. I attended the League of Towns meeting, um, had a visit with the Fire Department Company for the town office again. I've been working on a Brown Town Law, um, grant, um, we received a grant. We were one of nine towns to receive a grant from the state's Brown Town Law, um, grant program. So I have to develop some standards of operating for how to administer that grant. It has funds for some public spaces and public outreach, and then can be used to reimburse property owners for expenses from moving Brown Town Law.
I haven't heard much about Roundhead Moth this year.
Is it bad this year?
No, I didn't, I didn't see many, yeah.
That's pilotable, yeah, ridiculous, never seen so many.
I have a kitchen out there.
Yes, unbelievable, I've never seen it before.
I barely saw any this year, and the year before, they're all...
Yeah. Worked on meeting prep, I attended a, um, press event at the Old Red Store over in Bernard. We received a national historic places designation. Had a meeting with the town attorney and Noel Kossen regarding short-term rental ordinance, processed payroll, and, uh, doing the final review on the map geo project for the town's mapping on the website, which should be ready to go live on the website in a short while. Public Works, um, did some repairs to their pavement cutter, mowed the town office, repaired washouts on Cape Road, mowed the back beach, cut out crosspipes on Clark Point, changed the crosspipe on Clark Point, repaired hydraulic lines, finished cutting shoulders on the south end of Clark Point Road, new tires installed on the case, mowed the town office trail and solar panels, filled washboards and potholes on Cape Road, did some repairs to the John Deere, repaired washout on Kellytown, ditching on Cape Road, picked up the new, um, speed radar trailer, and more ditching on Cape Road. Harbor Master was, um, scheduling the electrician for some hoist repairs on the electric hoist, checked Cost Island, followed up on, um, the dumpster at the wharf. Harvard committee, um, packet prep and attended the Harvard committee meeting, ordered the warp permits, did some replacements on the electric hoist, um, took trash DMR, cleaned up the, uh, some gear that was in soaps and brought it up here. Still waiting for multiple estimates on the hoist, and dealt with overflow on the transient quotes, and is working on readjusting a moor in, in the harbor. Uh, over the next few weeks, I will hopefully be wrapping up the town clerk search and onboarding a new town clerk, and preparing for next week's, um, select board meeting with, um... You're going to have, um, next week's meeting is just going to be a presentation from FEMA and NEMA regarding that ETA technical assistance program the town received. And they're gonna come to a presentation, thirty to forty-five minute presentation on what they recommend for a project of the war. That's all that we're on.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. Suggestions for the next meeting? Date of the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to confirm the date of the next one. I'll make a motion to confirm the date of the next meeting from Monday, August fourteenth at five p.m. at the town office.
Second. Been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting from Monday, August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, five p.m. at the town office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, now we have an executive session entitled personal matters.
You are Steve, is that your phone?
No, I'm not doing it.
I'll make a motion to find the public discussion of these personal matters could be reasonably expected to cause damage to the employees' reputation and/or to violate the employees' privacy rights and therefore to go into executive session to discuss the employment, appointment, assignment, duties, promotion, demotion, compensation, evaluation, disciplining, resignation, and/or dismissal of an individual or group of public officials, appointees, or employees as permitted by one MRSA four oh five dot six dot.
You gonna second it, Eric?
A second. It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session entitled personnel matters as read by Mackenzie. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah, sorry to get that.
Executive session at six twenty-one. Uh, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?